... Two more things around the year of 2014. The Board of Education on July 21st, 2014, at 7:00 p.m. is around the high school library meetings. May I have a little question? Mrs. McInnes? Here. Mrs. McGinnis? Here. Mr. Daniels?
Here.
Mr. Navarro?
Here.
Mrs. Bassman?
Here.
Please rise to the mic. We are going to be discussing the United States of America and to the Republic of the United States, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice as our own. Okay, I need permission to approve the agenda. This will change the motion, this will be the second discussion, and the rule called please. Mrs. McGinnis?
Yes.
Mrs. Verdennes?
Yes.
Mrs. Blatter?
Yes.
Mr. Daniels?
Yes.
Ms. Flot?
Yes.
Mr. Navarro?
Yes.
Ms. McCarry. Board of Education allows and encourages members of the public and visitors to address the board during public comment. Speakers will be invited to address the board in order which public comment requests were submitted. These non-speakers are limited to three minutes. Do we have any cards? Is there any public comment? In hearing none, we move to communications to the board and presentations. First is the Ethics Act Training Session.
My name is Steve Richard. I'm from La Creme, Hodges, Louisiana. And, uh, Board Member, tonight on your agenda is a resolution that would require the submission of a proposition to the orders concerning bond issuance. So this is an appropriate comment, and I've been asked to come and speak to you about what are the legal requirements concerning what school officials and board members can and cannot do. And unfortunately, this is a fairly complicated area of the law, so bear with me, but I'd like to hopefully, in this, uh, training session, make everything clear for the administration and board members and our consultants. Uh, and I will also have time for questions at the end, so if you could either hold your questions or feel free to get around. There's no, um, magic. There are three main statutes that govern what school district employees and board members can and can't do regarding a referendum. There's the Election Interference Prohibition Act, the State Official Employees Ethics Act, and the Local Governmental Political Rights Act, uh, which applies to government employees and officers' ability to, uh, engage in their own, uh, political, uh, activities in their own time. Let's turn first to the Election Interference Prohibition Act. This statute, um, has been on the books for a long time, and it bars the expenditure of public funds to advocate votes for or against a referendum. However, the same statute expressly permits the use of public funds to disseminate factual information about a referendum. The idea is that the district has a valid legitimate interest in ensuring that the electors are informed about the facts concerning the referendum, but the district is prohibited from using any public money to advocate votes for or against the proposition. Let's turn to the Ethics Act, which is the second and really the, the most complicated statute, uh, which I'm gonna spend the most of my time discussing. Um, the Ethics Act, it doesn't apply directly to the school district, but it has a provision that requires local government entities like school districts to adopt, uh, an ordinance or resolution regulating the political activities of officers and employees. It also, um, requires adoption of provisions governing soliciting and accepting of gifts, but I'm not gonna talk about those provisions. Now, your board policy two dot one oh five, entitled Ethics and Gift Ban, um, carries out this statutory requirement, and the remainder of, um, my discussion of the Ethics Act, you know, is based on both language right out of the statute and adopted by the board, uh, board policy two one oh five.
Have a question, Steve.
Yes?
Um, is the district allowed to send a question to the public regarding whether or not they would support a referendum, as long as they're not advocating a yes or no?
Well, are you talking about the resolution on the board's agenda tonight?
No.
No? Okay. You, are you talking about an advisory referendum?
No. Not, nothing to do with the referendum itself, just a, we're gonna send out a questionnaire to ask whether people would support a referendum or not, just so we can get a feel of where the community is. But we're, and, but we wouldn't send a, anything saying we would like you to support it, just a question. Would you be willing to support a referendum?
Well, we'll get to what the specific prohibited political activities are.
Okay.
The list and, and, and.
Can you answer it there?
Yeah.
Okay.
Okay, thanks. So the baseline rule under the Ethics Act is no officer or employee of the district shall intentionally perform any prohibited political activity in four circumstances: either during compensated time, using any property or resources of the district, or as a required job duty or in exchange for a reward or gift. That's the basic rule. And now, I'm gonna turn to the compensated time. What is that? And then also turn to what is, what is a prohibited political activity? First, compensated time. Compensated time means, for most employees, during the regular workday, um, but it also means for certain employees whose jobs are not a recognized by a job, like a superintendent, it means whenever they're executing official duties, regardless of the location. Um, it does not include sick days, vacation, or personal days, et cetera. Your board policy, in addition, imposes the requirement that for employees, um, compensated time includes whenever they are on district premises. Now, board members are not compensated. You guys perform your service for free, and so there's a question as to whether the compensated time provision even applies to you. Our conservative, um, legal advice has always been our firm that board members are covered when they're performing their official duties, um, but, uh, you know, a board member is not performing official duties at all times, obviously, and has, you know, outside life. Um, and, and that's, that is our, our firm's interpretation. Turning to the prohibited political activities, there's a very comprehensive, specific list that includes fifteen different acts defined as a prohibited political activity. So there's, I'm not going to read all of them. This list is here for your reference. It's also set forth in your own ethics policy, uh, but I'll highlight a couple, uh, items here, and then we get to, um, Ms. Flot's question. The, you know, district, you know, one of the prohibited political activities involves political rallies, very unusual with referenda, soliciting contributions, uh, including campaign contributions. That does sometimes happen with a referendum, uh, where you have a referendum, um, campaign. Another specifically defined prohibited political activity is planning or participating in a public opinion poll, um, in connection with a campaign for or against any referendum question. This gets to Ms. Flot's question. If you're doing, um, and, and then actually, let me move to the next, the next one as well. Surveying or gathering information from potential or actual voters, um, is also prohibited political activity, um, if it is in connection with a referendum, to determine the probable vote outcome in a referendum question. The short answer, Ms. Flot, is pretty much, you're, you're in dangerous territory if you're going to survey the voters to find out what the actual probable vote outcome is. However, if you haven't placed a referendum question on the ballot, and if it's not a fait accompli, that you're going to do it, um, then, you know, it, you're not doing it in connection with a particular referendum question that exists. So you, you, you know, it, it, there's a facts and circumstances analysis here, but I think as a general matter, no, we don't survey anything. Other prohibited political activities, good assisting in the polls on election day, um, soliciting votes, obviously, making contributions, um, in connection with a campaign. This, the, the, the big one with referendum is distributing or preparing for distribution campaign for or against a referendum question. That's a prohibited political activity. Number thirteen here is managing or working on a campaign for or against any referendum question. And then finally, number fifteen is participating in any recount or challenge to the outcome of an election. These fifteen items are prohibited political activities, and they're, they're not always prohibited. They're prohibited if it's done using compensated time, using district resources, or as a job duty essentially, or for a given duty. Now, nothing in the Ethics Act, um, I'm sorry to make.
A question would be, I'm sure it's one everyone's heard. You're saying managing or working on a campaign for or against any referendum question. As a school board member, we can't do that, but as a community member, we can, but again, we're always watching school board members, so.
Right. We're, and absolutely, that is right on point. We're gonna get to it. And in fact, that, I'm gonna lead right into it here. Nothing in your ethics policy, and in fact, your policy expressly allows activities that are otherwise appropriate as part of official duties, or activities undertaken on a voluntary basis. It's the voluntary basis piece that allows a board member as a citizen and taxpayers to manage, you know, a referendum campaign in their own time. And we always recommend that there be a disclaimer. I'm not acting in my official capacity here as a board member or as a board president. This is just in my private, uh, interest as a concerned citizen. But what does it mean to be appropriate as part of official duties? Well, the, the board and the administration, uh, obviously, a job duty here is to provide, to inform the community about the district, um, and so, board members and administrators can provide mutual information about district finances and reasons for seeking a referendum. That is appropriate as part of official duties, therefore not a violation of the board policy. Factual information is okay. Advocacy is not. We'll get to that distinction a little more later on. Now, going back to that voluntary activities, um, piece, uh, there's a specific statute, the Local Government Employees Political Rights Act, that prohibits the school district from making any rule that inhibits or prohibits any of its employees from exercising their political rights. So this would allow, um, you know, school employees, uh, and board members to, on their own time, not while at work or on duty, to engage in, um, their, you know, political, private political activities. So here's a list of, summing, kind of, sum, summing things up. A list of what school officials and board members cannot do. So you cannot use public funds, district property, or district resources in support of a referendum in general. So this would include using school resources like copiers and, or mailers for campaigning or advocacy purposes. And even though there's really no public funds involved, you know, you would, um, our conservative advice would be to avoid using district email or websites either, as those can be considered as district's resources, um, and so, you know, employees or board members should not use their official district email accounts to engage in, I know, referendum advocacy. The next, uh, bullet point there, do not use school facilities for referendum committee games unless it is the way that you would allow any outside group to use school facilities. Your board policy eight point allows the community to use school facilities when it doesn't interfere with legitimate school activity, and the referendum committee could also be allowed to use. You don't have to be in hand, you know, if the referendum committee is allowed, then you can handle it, uh, if you allow. So clearly, you don't want to encourage students to tell their parents to vote yes for the referendum. You cannot use school-supplied materials by describing a referendum in positive, non-factual terms. So for instance, you would avoid phrases like, it will, the referendum would be good for our schools, or it's bad for neither. You want to be factual. And, you know, the last bullet point here, it's very important, that personnel paid by the school district should not be used in efforts related to support for the referendum. That would include, uh, personnel, uh, paid by the district directly, i.e. employees, or indirectly, i.e. employees. What school officials and board members can do is provide factual information about the referendum to the community. For example, identifying possible consequences for both sides, to the school district if the referendum fails, and to the taxpayers if the referendum succeeds. You can also distribute information that describes the referendum, including all the relevant factual data, um, to the extent of, that, enrollment projections, comparisons with other districts, the status of your current facilities and programs, and the district's financial conditions, are all information that the district is in possession of and needs to, um, deliver to the voters to ensure an informed referendum. But you would avoid persuasive language in any, um, district mailing to newsletters or communications. School officials and board members, again, can campaign on their own private time, in their capacity as private citizens. We recommend a disclaimer where the board member makes it clear, or the, um, employee, teacher, for instance, after workout, makes it clear that their participation is not in their official capacity or employment capacity, but, you know, in their personal capacities as tax payers and citizens. The key thing to remember is information versus advocacy. Providing information about the referendum is okay, but advocacy of a position related to the referendum is not okay. So you want to scrupulously look at any mailings and ensure they're not trying to influence the vote. You're just delivering the facts to the electorate. Here's a quiz. Based on, you know, what I presented, I think you hopefully can understand the answers, if not already know the answers to the questions. Would there be anything wrong with employees wearing campaign buttons at school? Seeing some heads nod up and down, the answer would be yes, a campaign button for a referendum says like, vote yes, for instance? That is the same, like soliciting a vote for the referendum. They're on district property. Again, your policy defines that is included within the scope of compensated time. That is then a violation. But soliciting a vote for a community member wearing a button. A community member wearing a button on district property, they're not covered by the act. It applies just to the employees and officials.
But don't forget to vote, okay?
Um, I can get back to you on that. I think, yeah, I, I think.
This is, it's.
Buttons, you know, there's just a lot of baggage, I think, with buttons in, in school districts.
Just a final.
Okay. Yeah, yeah, okay. And putting up referendum campaign signs at school, a lot of, yeah, no, that's a no-no. You wouldn't want to do that. I mean, it, it's possible that you could have, like, unarea designated, you know, for political science, both pro and against, but generally. Instructing staff to make political phone calls. Some smiles, that's really a no-no. Um, what about board member or administrator official speeches that community means? Say the literary club wants to invite, um, the superintendent or, um, another, a board member to speak about the referendum to their group. Is that okay?
It's okay. You just give me the facts and my permission.
Exactly. That is, that's the touchstone, you know, is if, if you can, they can appear, they can speak in their official capacity, they can disseminate facts. They can not engage in advocacy, and it's always a good thing to remind the listener. You know, by the way, you know, I'm not allowed, and I'm not here to advocate for any vote on, on the election. That is the decision of the electorate. I'm just here to distribute facts. Yes?
So if the board member administers that being as a private citizen, is the same thing?
And then that's the last item. What about board members or administrators doing their personal activities on their own time with, like, say a disclaimer? You know, hey, I'm here in my capacity as a concerned tax, you know, taxpayer myself, and here are my thoughts on the referendum. That's okay.
And when you say disclaimer, does it have to be written or can you state it?
You would just try to be clear so that, here's the, the thing. The community and taxpayers, they, it should be clear enough that they know and they can see what's, what's happening. This is not an official district sponsorship of a particular outcome in the election, but this is just me speaking my thoughts. That's, I mean, I think you just need to be clear. Um, and as one last point here in the training, I recommend, I think, district that has a ballot proposition, teachers and staff get very interested and seem to be really energetic about it, but I think they also need training to understand, um, your policy two one oh five and what they can and cannot do in connection with the referendum. So I do recommend additional training, like, in service for your staff this fall. Any questions?
Bill? One thing that was discussed this fall was yard signs. And as a board member, could they put a yard sign in their yard? But the problem there was distinguishing.
No, absolutely, that's just on their property. On their personal property, there's no question that they can, any district employee or board member can put a yard sign at their personal home. Though that, you get that question a lot. It's a good question.
I have one thing I need to clarify, and this is something, this is.
Something that I think needs to be clarified from the last time. All of this applies whether it's been put on the ballot, whether we voted to put it on the ballot or not, correct?
If it applies, then it is clear that it's going to be put on the ballot.
Okay. Okay. And then my second.
If it's completely speculative, if it's something that people haven't discussed, but, I mean, for your district, you did, that put proposition on the ballot for the last election.
Right.
It is reasonable.
Okay. And then my second question is, is it okay, I'm thinking it is, it is okay for us to say to people, it's really important that you learn the facts before you vote, make sure that you take the time? Maybe that was something that I did when I went to community meetings, um, prior to the last referendum, was to say to people, um, yes, there's a referendum, please make sure that you go to wherever it's you need to go to make sure that you have the right information regarding the referendum, make sure that you educate yourself prior to voting, and then make sure to vote. That's okay to say?
That is okay. That is okay. I don't think we need to get into the business of telling people to vote, but.
Okay. So, so the whole thing, make sure that you're educated.
Yes.
That you have all your questions answered prior to the election, so that's, um, okay to say.
Did the district have a valid interest in ensuring the electorate?
Are there any further questions? Do we still have your administrators or anything up there?
All right. I hope this has been helpful. And I actually have a frequently asked questions document available, um, for pickup. Obviously, they're for, that's one of the things that I've been having.
Thank you very much.
Sorry? Is that? Uh, yes, if you like it.
Yes.
Absolutely. Great.
I think you probably might want to say that because.
This is, uh, I'm not sure if, um, I'm not, uh, doing this, uh, doing this, uh, I'm not sure if, uh, I'm sure this will, uh, if I'm, uh. Thanks. Thank you. All the people who, uh, uh, this, uh, I would definitely do the same, uh, presentation as well. I think, um, the administrators have been, you know, trained, been ready, prepared to do it in each of the schools, uh, or in the, I should say, the, the, uh, school. Okay, we're gonna move on to the public comment discussion. And we have talked about this earlier. We get two public comments on our agenda. We had some discussion about either going back to one, or going back to one, but deciding where it is we want it. Do we want it in here, or do we want it there? So, like, a discussion.
Personally, I'd rather have it right after the new business, or, or we have our second one now. Okay. 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 Yeah, I just wanted to keep one public comment, put it at the, right after the new business before the closed session, is the way I prefer to have it done.
I, I'm gonna agree with that as well, because, um, we, it seems as though we had the last, we've had the public comment, we've got two public comments, one in the beginning, one at the end, but basically, I think people are using it more to reiterate what they said in the first one. At least that's what I've seen over the last few meetings that we've had. So I, I agree. I think, you know, the, the people that are concerned, you know, when they're here, they can, you know, they can hear the discussion, what happens throughout most of the meeting, and then they, you know, they can choose, at that point, make a public comment, a keynote statement.
Yeah, I'm also gonna go with that. I had some conversations with parents prior to this meeting, and the concern with having it at the beginning was that they had public comment, and then we talked about all the new business and everything that was going on, and then they had to hold off on that comment until the next meeting. So while it's fresh in their mind, they wanted the opportunity to be able to do that, so I agree with that.
I'm back.
I support Ann's recommendation.
I'm good with it too. So I guess we're moving it to actually new business.
And we are going to eliminate the first public comment. Okay? Thank you. Okay, we'll move on to the superintendent's report.
The move from the OHSH Center to Pre-BIAC and consent call to the OHS Education Center are complete. The move from the Education Service Center for our teaching and learning staff began Thursday, July seventeen, and will be completed this Wednesday. The move for the I T Department from the high school to the Education Service Center will begin next Wednesday and will be completed that Monday, July twenty eighth. Construction of walls, doors, and various items such as electric data and card readers are all underway, and will be completed in time for the start of the school. So what we want to thank Charlie and his team for, um, definitely making this a priority and for getting the work done so that we're ready for the start of school. So we really appreciate that, Charlie. And please cast that onto your staff. August Administrator Retreat, uh, the team will kick off the new year in an administrative retreat on August fourth and fifth. Department should be providing important information to the team, uh, some of which is the, uh, training that we just talked about, and this will be, and will also be finalized and closed, twenty fourteen, twenty fifteen district goals. And I, as I went to EQUA training earlier today, I've asked that we make sure that our strategic plan, as well as our district goals, along with our student improvement plans, and our principal goals are all, uh, aligned, and that, uh, we are utilizing EQUA for that alignment, since that's what we're using for the presentation of the results of our progress. Twenty fourteen, fifteen, opening day assembly, the district will host its annual opening day assembly at the high school, and, uh, with all staff on Thursday, August fourteenth. We hope the board will be able to join us for this event. There will be a meet and greet breakfast at eight ten till nine o'clock a.m., the assembly with staff from nine to ten fifteen, and a chat and share with parents and community from ten fifteen to eleven a.m. And finally, the. And finally, the 2014-15 student handbook, we're looking, we are in the final phases of completing this student handbook, and a summary of changes will be provided to the board and they'll really update this formula. And that is it for the superintendents report.
I need a motion to approve the June 16, 2014 regular meeting, June 30, 2014 special meeting, July 7, 2014 special meeting, July 7, 2014, making the whole meeting.
Second. Mr. Dina's made the motion, Ms. Walts, second, is there any discussion?
Question. Since July 17, we have a full meeting, we're going to find. There's a statement that starts out, President Bradley made the following statement, and there's nothing that follows it.
I'm going to be on attachment to the minutes and sorry about that.
Can I have a roll call, please?
Mrs. Walts?
Yes.
Mr. Daniels?
Yes.
Mrs. Rutherford?
Yes.
Mr. Devera?
Yes.
Mrs. Larson?
Yes.
Mrs. McInnes?
Yes.
Mrs. Verdani?
Yes.
Motion carries. I'm gonna move on to the consent agenda. I need a motion to approve the consent agenda, so just one, make the motion. Mr. Daniels, second, is there any discussion? Have a roll call, please.
Mrs. Larson? Mr. Devera?
Yes.
Mr. Devera?
Yes.
Mrs. Verdani?
Yes.
Mrs. McInnes?
Yes.
Mrs. Rutherford?
Yes.
Mr. Daniels?
Mrs. Walts?
Yes.
Motion carries. And we're gonna move to old business, temporary classroom purchase for Rowan Lake High School.
We, at the last board meeting, we talked about this. We had asked, we know that as we are looking at the population at the high school growing, and as we're looking at not putting kids in a large number of study halls, and actually providing classes for our kids, and looking at increasing core classes here again, focusing on increasing our graduation rate, and having kids really be in classes that are going to lead to higher levels of graduation and credits for our students that we need rooms to put our students in. And so we did discuss this, and Don, as well as Bill, shared information with the board at the last meeting. We did ask board members if you had any questions about the information that was provided to get back to us last week. We didn't hear anything, so there are no questions regarding that. We're asking that the board approve our getting a mobile unit. We did say that, you know, pending what occurs with the referendum, we would still be able to use those portable classrooms, and that we know that our desire is to bring students back from outside of the district, from Seale and other areas where we have our students located, back into the district. So this would still give us an opportunity and a location to house our students as we're trying to bring students that we're paying for outside of the district back into Rowan Lake District 116.
Okay, I need a motion to approve the purchase of temporary classrooms. Second. Mr. Dina's made the motion, Ms. Walts, second, is there any discussion? I just would like to make a comment about this, that I appreciate the work that's being done for this, to give our students the opportunity not to be sitting in study halls all day. I had a discussion on objective comments this morning. Study halls do nothing but cause trouble in the school. And so, giving our students the opportunity to have the classrooms and the electives and the courses that we, that Dr. Mendoza did promise them, whether or not the referendum passed, the amount of work it's gone into, this goes to the department. I really appreciate that.
One comment I would also like to make is that while this immediate need is at the high school, and will satisfy things, we're overcrowded here. As we've looked on our facility master plan for the last three years, we know and understand that there's our space issues in a number of buildings, and we only have resources to be able to address one of them, the referendum, that being high school, the most critical need. So I just wanted to point out that there is a tremendous need for an asset of this type moving forward down the road with some of our other buildings.
Can I have a roll call, please?
Mrs. Verdani?
Yes.
Mrs. McInnes?
Yes.
Mrs. Walts?
Yes.
Mrs. Rutherford?
Yes.
Mrs. Devera?
Yes.
Mrs. Rutherford?
Yes.
Mr. Daniels?
Yes.
Motion carries. I'm gonna move on to new business.
Under the first set of considerations, an action on a resolution providing for a requirement to submission of a proposition of issues for building bonds for the voters of the district at the general election to be held on November 4th, 2014.
Thank you. What you, we have four resolutions, and Dr. Collins just read the first one. I will also put a brief summary in here, trying to explain a little bit about what the four represent. The one that she just read is to put the ballot, or put the question on the ballot. The other three resolutions are to work on some of the funding of that. The main consideration which PMA came and presented at the June 2nd meeting was to indicate that the equalized assessed value has gone down from where it was last spring when we were promoting the $29 million referendum. We still are promoting a $29 million referendum, but we have to be a little more creative and refund and refinance some of existing bonds more heavily than we were intending to originally. As well as issue some non-referendum funds, bond, working cash, as they call it, working cash bond, to get us to that $29 million. So these four resolutions achieve that. As part of issuing that non-referendum bond, we also have to have a public hearing thirty, at least thirty days out. And so one of the resolutions in here is to recommend that that public hearing be held before the bonds are issued. And so, that's what the four, if there's any other questions, I'd be happy to answer them.
So I'd just like to clarify for any board members that might be out there. The $2.5 million is a subset of the $29 million ask.
That is correct, yes, sir.
It's not incremental. Nor is the $10 million ask incremental to the $29 million. It's to refund existing debt.
That's correct.
Thank you.
So I need a motion for approval that the general election be held on Tuesday, the fourth day of November 2014. The following proposition will be submitted to the voters of Rowan Lake. Community districts, well, number 116, and county Illinois. Shout the Board of Education of Rowan Lake Community and School District, number 116, Lake County, Illinois. Building improvements to improve the site of, alter, repair, and equip a portion of the Rowan Lake High School building, including construction, new classrooms, new STEM, science, technology, engineering, math, labs, and additional gymnasium, and student commons, installing technology and security improvements, and construction improvements to enhance student circulation, and issue bonds of said school district to the amount of $29 million for the purpose of paying the costs thereof.
Mr. Daniels made the motion, Ms. Verdina's second, is there any questions? And a roll call, please.
Mr. Devera?
Yes.
Mrs. Larson?
Yes.
Mr. Daniels?
Yes.
Mrs. Rutherford?
Yes.
Mrs. Verdani?
Yes.
Mrs. Walts?
Yes.
Mrs. McInnes?
Yes.
Motion carries.
I need a motion for the calling of a public hearing concerning the intent of the Board of Education of Community Unit School District, number 116, Lake County, Illinois, to sell $2.5 million working cash fund bonds.
Mr. Daniels made the motion, Ms. Walts, second, again, are there any questions? Can I have a roll call, please?
Mrs. Walts?
Yes.
Mr. Daniels?
Yes.
Mrs. Rutherford?
Yes.
Mr. Devera? Yes.
Mrs. Larson?
Yes.
Mrs. McInnes?
Yes.
Mrs. Verdani?
Yes.
Motion carries.
I need a motion for approval declaring the board's intent to issue $10 million funding bonds to pay claims against the district's debt.
Ms. Walts made the motion, Mr. Daniels, second, any questions? Roll call, please.
Mrs. Larson?
Yes.
Mrs. Devera?
Yes.
Mrs. Verdani?
Yes.
Mrs. McInnes?
Yes.
Mrs. Rutherford?
Yes.
Mr. Daniels?
Yes.
Mrs. Walts?
Yes.
Motion carries.
I need a motion for approval calling for the BMA hearing concerning the board's intent to issue working cash fund bonds.
Mr. Daniels made the motion, Ms. Verdina's second, questions? Roll call, please.
Mr. Devera?
Yes.
Mrs. Larson?
Yes.
Mr. Daniels?
Yes.
Mrs. Rutherford?
Yes.
Mrs. Verdani?
Yes.
Mrs. Walts?
Yes.
Mrs. McInnes?
Yes.
Motion carries. Okay, we're gonna move to public comment. Again, public comment will be limited to three minutes. Is there any public comment?
I hear none.
We'll move to closed session. We have a motion for closed session to discuss the appointment and going to conversation. Discipline, performance, or dismissal of specific authority to the public bond, including legal control.